I'd like to call the meeting to order and if everyone can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thanks everybody for attending. I guess we don't need a motion to approve the agenda because there's only one item on the agenda, which is a discussion of Eastfield facilities and the future of our fields and infrastructure in Irvington. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Harrison.
Well, good evening, everyone, and it's nice to see you. Certainly recognize that it is cold out there and I appreciate you bearing the elements that come out and participate in this important dialogue. And as Mr. Gredo's, I think appropriately indicated, I mean, we're looking at this conversation tonight. It's the beginning of a process. It's the first step in what will be dialogue that'll occur over the next couple of months. Tonight, we're going to focus primarily on Eastfield, but there's a bigger issue here, a bigger discussion. That's about our fields. That's about our facilities and the future of our schools. So there's a story that brings us to this room here tonight. And if we roll back the hands of time to the summer of 2012, the board and administration then was exploring possibilities of improving Mazarros Field, our main field with the track right down across from this parking lot. And in that process, there was conversation that came up about Eastfield. And Eastfield is just up the hill a bit, a practice field. And Eastfield notoriously is not of the greatest condition. It's not the nicest playing surface that does exist. So we began to take a look at, geez, what can we do at Eastfield? Should we look at some improvements there? And if so, what could we do with them and connect them with the work that we are considering at Mazarros Field? And in doing so, our engineers were up there and started some basic soil sampling, just wanted to see how the ground would perk for drainage. And went in with a small backhoe, took a scoop of earth, and obtained construction debris, bricks and items. At that point in time, we immediately closed the field. We wanted to be as prudent as possible to make sure that the field was safe, that no one was going to be exposed to any kind of hazards that may be present. So then we quickly jumped in with the guidance of the scientists and engineers that we partner with, began testing and immediately went to DEC and DOH, Environmental Conservation and Department of Health, and began talking to them about the type of testing that we should explore. The administration then worked very closely with our engineers to take every step possible to make sure we were performing all of our testing to the highest standard possible and that we were adhering to all the guidance that DEC and DOH were sharing. So through this process, there's been a lot of testing that's been done. There's been many conversations with folks at DEC, DOH, and that's ranging from random phone calls to a number of in-person meetings at their facilities. And at the end of the day, DEC and our engineers really believe that we have a handle on what the situation is before us. And our engineers from Land Associates have presented a couple of different options that we're going to talk about tonight. Options that through their communication, our communication with our state regulatory departments should be certainly approved and satisfy any of the concerns that are present. So we'll start off by talking about Eastfield. From there, we'll just do a little refresher on some of the conversation that we had about Mazarros Field and the track, and then start to think about some other facilities needs that we have across our district. So to go back to that day in August of 2012, and I remember it well because all the staff was just arriving. It was one of my first days in district with all the teachers. It was my birthday and we get called by Rich to come up to the field. And we go up there and quite honestly, it was something that we could write a book about, the types of items that were being surfaced. Then we look at it, it's things that would be classified really as traditional construction and demolition debris, things that had been dumped there over time. And quite honestly, as I said, the first couple came in and came up with a bunch of red brick that had been dumped there one time. You see, there was copper and steel piping, some wire. But then there are items that had, we have no idea how they ended. There were a pair of boots that they came across. There were these interesting dials that we began to look at and were trying to figure out what these items were. And they looked kind of scary. We're sitting there Googling the manufacturer. Turns out, it was pieces of an old radio that had been dumped there at one point in time. And from there, the testing certainly revealed that there were some elevated levels of metals, metals that are commonly found in our environment, but there were some spots where these numbers were a little elevated where we typically find. And so, from that work, they've gone forward through the communication with DEC and identified some different options for us, and options that will address any of the concerns that I think we in the audience would have, sitting around the board table may have, but also any concerns that may come from DEC and DOH. And our ultimate goal here is not just to satisfy these regulatory departments, but also to bring a field back into use. And whether it's for our student athletes, our students in PE classes, our community organizations that use the field, but we want the field to be usable for everybody. So we're proposing them not only to address these concerns, but there's also issues of drainage that lie up with Eastfield. There's been historical concerns about drainage, whether that field would flood, whether the surface waters or groundwater in the area were flowing into neighboring yards in the Field Point area. So our goal here is to tackle all of these areas and to turn this field back into playable use as soon as possible. So with that said, there's a scope of things to consider. We could take a minimalist approach. We could just do the bare minimum and fix the field, get it back in order, and just make it playable, satisfy DEC, DOH, not worry about the overall condition. We can make improvements that would enhance the playability of the field, with ladder, better surface, there would be divots and little ditches that maybe our students would put an ankle in. The drainage comes up again. Should we include a drainage system to address those other concerns that have been there historically? If we're going to put in a natural grass field, in doing so, is it responsible for us to put in irrigation? If we want to talk about maintaining a healthy sod, we may want to water the field, just as we do on some of other fields. Or do we want to consider constructing a field that would introduce an opportunity to expand usage? We recognize there's limitations in the amount of wear and tear a grass field can take. So does that option consider looking at a turf field? So with that said, I want to delve in a little deeper into what these options look like. There's three options that I'll talk about this evening. Two of them are natural fields, and one of them is an artificial turf field. Certainly, a lot of little details to talk about here. So if we need to go back at some point and reflect, we can. There's a couple slides that will follow that'll summarize some of this information. But the first option that we're looking at, there's no further excavation on the field. We leave Eastfield as it sits today. We bring in two feet of clean fill. And when I say clean, it's all tested and certified that it's clean. There's no contaminants in the soil. So we can grade, seed, and bring this field back into use. In doing so, we look at some of the details that I've outlined here for you. The estimated amount of playing time each week, 25 to 30 hours. But there's a cap here. In doing so, if you look at the field, if you're just going to bring in two feet of soil, and we're going to have to, as we said, grade the field accordingly, and you bring in all of this soil, it's going to expand further and cover a larger surface area than we do today. And in doing so, we're going to have to remove some trees. And you can see about a third acre of trees that have to be removed along the Field Point side of the field. And I'll be able to show you what that looks like at home. When we look at a natural field, we also have to look at how long it's going to take for the turf, for the grass to be able to take. We could take an approach and put sod down. We recognize that sod is going to be a quicker return because it's already grown and matured grass. We'd have to let it sit and develop a root system. But once the work is completed, we could be looking at playing on the field in about 12 months. If we were to seed the field, and that, of course, would be a cheaper process, we're going to develop likely a healthier grass, a deeper root system. But that process will take approximately 18 months or three growing seasons. One thing that we have to consider also with each of these scenarios, is the number of trucks. So when we're thinking about bringing in soil, you think of that huge area that encompasses all of Eastfield, even going into the tree line a bit now, we have to think about all that soil that we're bringing in. We estimate that's going to be 418 truckloads. So picture Irvington, 418 trucks throughout one summer month, going back and forth. So those are trucks coming down Broadway. Those are trucks going up Heritage Hill, this Campus Hill, and driving up to the field and out again. 418 trucks is going to certainly have some impact on the community. It's certainly going to have impact on our own property. Concerned, we just paved Campus Hill last year. And in doing so, the volume of trucks and the weight of those trucks with all that soil loaded on, we have to have some concern about the wear and damage potentially that's going to be had on that hill. So in sum, the cost here, we're looking at a situation just shy of $1 million, $988,000 for this scenario. We could save approximately $100,000 by opting for seeding over the sod. And remember, there's some give and take there. We certainly, by saving of $100,000, by having the natural seed put down, we're going to have a healthier, more durable surface potentially than with the sod. But we're also going to sacrifice one season of playing time. One little, you'll see the asterisk that certainly sits at the bottom of each of these slides, is that this plan must be authorized by DEC, DOH. Everyone we've been working with, our conversations, as I said, believe that these plans are going to be absolutely approved. But we just have to keep that in mind. The final plans would have to be authorized by those folks. The other natural grass consideration for us isn't all that different, but jump and go down and look to the bottom line here. Look at the costs. We're looking at about $100,000 difference. And then if we come back up to the top where we identify option two, you can see where that comes from. Rather than importing two feet of soil, we're bringing in one foot of soil. So how do we accomplish this, you might ask? Well, if we look at what this work outlines, that we're going to go to three areas on the field. And these three areas are areas where there were some shallow exceedances, we'd say, where those numbers of the elements of the compounds that were identified in the testing were higher than other areas. So engineers, contractors would go to those areas, excavate those areas to one foot in depth, fill those with clean fill, and then bring in one foot to cover the entire field. That'll meet all DEC requirements. DOH will be satisfied with that plan. It's certainly our belief. And in doing so, there's a significant savings that is here. In looking at the details, similar to what we discussed with the first scenario, playing time is the same. However, there's no clearance of trees. We're not having to cut down that third of an acre of trees along the side of the field because the volume of soil, to be able to get the appropriate contour of the field that we would need for drainage, would not have to run into the tree line. Same scenarios with sod versus seed, but then the number of trucks certainly differs. 188 trucks versus that previous number of 418. Certainly a different impact on the community, certainly a different toll on Campus Hill. The cost for this project would be $557,000. And again, if we were to look at a seeding rather than sod, we could save $100,000 potentially.
Is there a downside to that relative to the first one?
I guess it, I don't know how you would classify a downside, Phil. I guess there's maybe a risk reward, a reward equation that would have to be considered. Be mindful of the fact that how these exceedances, how the debris was discovered by excavation. By having to go in and excavate those three areas where the exceedances were found, we're going to be digging into the soil again. I think when we look at the findings that we have, we're not looking at a contamination source. We're not looking at a superfund site where there's contamination and the green ooze in our soil. We're looking at individual grains of sand, so to speak, that are out there on that field. And when the engineers came in, the scientists came in and took those samples, that those particular grains of dirt, those little pinpricks happened to be in those samples. There were samples taken all over the field that went up into the tree line. They created a massive gridwork that went across the field, and they did soil samples at various depths. And those were the three areas that came back as concerned. So I guess there is a risk reward factor here to consider. Is there a high degree of confidence that we will be all right? I think from everything that's been done, from land side of things, the data that's been reviewed by them and DEC, there's confidence that this plan would satisfy what our needs are. But I guess that is an outlawing risk that needs to be considered.
Are we claiming this is a regulation sized field or a practice?
I don't know how you want to handle the question.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we do a questions right after the, well, we'll take public questions and comment first, and then before the board will talk. Just make us get through the
But when, I think if we step forward after the next slide, you'll get an image of where we are. But if we're
But just to be clear on the last point, because I don't know if, if everybody got the difference. I mean, the difference is, option one is two feet of clean fill across the whole field, no further excavation. Option two is excavating in the three areas where we found potential issues. And that can cause potentially, since we're digging again, other potential issues, although there's a high degree of hope, I guess is the best word, that if we found anything, it would be similar to what we found, and the one foot of topsoil would be enough.
How big did you say that these three areas are relative to the whole field inside?
Small areas. I certainly, Ed and Rich, we have representatives from engineering, firm land, and our environmental council with us in the audience tonight. I feel the question that may be beyond my expertise.
The areas that we, we went into the three areas back where we had found exceedances and then did grids going out five feet, 10 feet from each of those areas. And so from there, we collected samples and were able to define.
John was just trying to get at what percentage of the total field
You want to say square footage, roughly. I mean, you probably figured 20 by 20 square foot area or four square feet. The three areas would be 20 by 20, a foot in depth.
Relative to an entire field that's
How many acres do we have up there?
Less than 1% of the whole field.
Right.
I guess another way of summarizing one versus two is that two, I mean, number one gives us a higher degree of confidence because we're adding two feet on top of everything.
Absolutely, yeah. That's the way I took it.
You're essentially putting another $400,000 and another 250 trucks into the belief that all that extra soil will give us a higher degree of safety, confidence.
We're creating a bigger barrier between contaminated soil and where the kids are playing.
There's a larger barrier. Confidence, I was using the word confidence in a different way before, but in that sense, I would say confidence, yes. If we're going to look to safety, DEC and DOH are comfortable with this. This scenario two, as well as scenario one, both seem to be completely agreeable. But I think if we come back to that risk reward scenario, that's how I was using confidence. Of course, with option one, there's greater confidence that you're not going to find other materials or have to have other unexpected work that could occur during the course of work.
Right.
Bob, we should
Yeah, I know. I sort of jumped in.
I just want to know what, what the word exceedance means.
A percentage that's higher than would normally be found in the soil.
Oh, something that exceeds something else. Okay.
So when we look at metals, for example, in all of our soil, you routinely are going to find metals and compounds that exist. We want to see copper, cadmium, lead to some degree, that in these individual areas, though the numbers that were, came back from the test results exceeded the normal residential acceptable yield rate that is out there for the state of New York. So if we're talking about the natural surface, a grass field, as I said before, we might want to consider drainage and irrigation. My recommendation, our engineers' recommendation, and I think anyone that lives in this immediate area knows some of the drainage concerns, that we couldn't proceed without including drainage. I think it certainly reminds me that DEC, DOH may have concerns approving any of the grass plans without drainage being properly included in this. And I can tell you from our dialogue with village representatives, village representatives certainly want to see drainage integrated into this project. Irrigation, as I said earlier, is certainly going to produce a better quality playing field, where we're going to have a healthier, natural turf. I look at the irrigation as an investment in this overall project. The irrigation certainly is going to produce a healthier field, and we're going to get much better usage out of that. And the sum of these costs would be about $477,000, which then have to be added to option one and option two. So if we want to talk about drainage, and this kind of gets into the concept of what we're looking at from the field. This is an aerial photo that's a little dated, but an aerial photo of Eastfield. If we look towards the bottom, you can see the old baseball diamond or softball field that was there, so to get a sense of where things are. Yes, we'll be able to have a regulation sized field. There is that possibility of looking at installing a usable baseball or softball field once again, which we don't currently have on any of our school grounds. So you get a sense of where we are. We can see this is Field Point Drive that comes up right here in Field Point. If we look at the top right-hand corner of the picture, is the pond that rests upon the hill. At the top, where you see these purple swig lines coming down, if you proceed up that way, you think you're going beyond the new Gierman Park subdivision up toward the direction of the water tower. And when we look at where the water flow comes from today, where concerns may exist with folks that live down in Field Point, the water's coming from a variety of sources. First and foremost, when we look to the pond in the upper right-hand side of this screen, the water does have a flow, especially after heavy rains. It will make its way down across the field. You can see historically, going back years and years ago, there used to be drain, an actual little stream basin that ran across the field down in this direction, which is no longer there. So by design, and again, this is concept, that we look at a basin to collect flow from the pond that would come down to this basin and then would connect to a drainage piping system. When we look, there is surface flow. So water that runs over the surface of the ground, there's actually a gully that you can almost see in that photo, that comes down from the hill, water that leads from, all the way up the top of the hill where the water tower is. And it slowly makes its way down, sometimes heavier than others. Maybe it'll look a little different at some point when Gierman Park is completed, but we know there is flow there now. And it makes its way down to that far corner of the field. And then there's the general surface flow, the water that runs across our field as it is. So when it rains, where does the water go? Some runs across the field, some soaks into the soil, makes its way through the ground. So in a drainage system that would be designed, we'd be looking at collecting water in a couple key places. The basin on the right, collection system on the top of the hill, collection system on the bottom of the hill, with a containment system, a piping system under the ground that would control the flow of the water to meet all the design's storm conditions that we would be regulated by. But that water then would certainly be piped into an existing drainage system and let away from the field.
That also illustrated we need the right of way to connect up to
Yeah, so there's, there's a few scenarios here in how we connect. There's the sewers that exist in Field Point. There's, the sewers belong to community at some points, but to gain access to them, we would have to go through private property in many cases. So if we're looking at individual homeowners' properties in the homes, that you can see their rooftops, there would have to be some negotiation with those folks. We would have to negotiate an easement, essentially, that we'll be able to run a drainage pipe underground through their property to connect with the existing drainage system. There'd have to be some further conversation, of course, with the broader homeowners' association to gain consent to alter, certainly, property that would be there and then connected with the drainage system ultimately. We've had some initial conversation with some of the folks in that neighborhood, but as we move forward in this process, we fully anticipate having dialogue, very close personal dialogue with all the folks that would be around the construction area. Of course, with those folks, we would need to, that we'd be interested in talking with them about gaining access to the property via easement, but having more global conversation with the folks in Field Point. But it's one step in many steps of the resolution of this project. So option three comes down to an artificial turf, a turf field. And looking at this, we're not looking at any further excavation. We're essentially looking at a scenario where we bring in a turf field, that we install a stone basin with a drainage system, drainage system that's integrated into it, still have the other drainage features that we highlighted with the natural grass fields. In doing so, certainly benefits that come with this. We'd be looking at a situation where we'd be able to increase the playing time, certainly have much durable turf, more durable turf for our students to play on. There would not be any clearance of trees. One benefit of this scenario, if we remember before, we were talking 12 to 18 months of time for that grass to grow. The field would be immediately available after construction. Where in each and any one of these scenarios, we'd be looking at breaking ground with construction in the end of June, because we'd want construction to occur when we didn't have students here. And it would go through the summer months with the objective of finishing by the end of August, early September. So we'd be looking at a field that would potentially be available almost immediately for that fall sports season. We're looking at the number of trucks traveling, certainly higher than scenario two, I believe, or closer to scenario two.
Scenario two is 188.
Yeah, 188. And 278. Here, what we're looking at, the trucks here are going to be bringing in material, going to be delivering rock that will become a part of the base that would, the field would ultimately rest upon. And we look at the costs associated with this, just shy of $1.5 million. So a bit of a comparison, a summary, and I'll pause for a second for everyone to take a look and process this. To recap, to look at option one, option one is two feet of clean soil, no further excavation. Of course, the larger number of trucks going into the tree line, removing about a third of an acre of trees, just shy of $1 million, and $4.7 hundred thousand of drainage. Option two, minor excavation in three areas. Again, that risk reward that we discussed, the integration of a drainage system, looking at a cost of just over $1 million. And an artificial turf field, which you can see priced quite comparable to option one, only a few dollars more than that, does not need a separate drainage system because all of that work is integrated into the top of that particular field. So if we're going to talk about Eastfield, there is that piece of Mazarros that we just want to touch on. Again, during the summer of '12, we're taking a look at that. We put a hold on that work. And it's something that we may want to consider within the scope of this work. If the board, so we certainly have the responsibility to make repairs and correct Eastfield and bring that back into use. But in doing so, we're going to have to consider bonding this work. If we look at the scope of any of those projects from a million to a million and a half dollars, we certainly don't have the resources to be able to fund it in any other way. So in doing so, it has to reinvigorate, I think, our conversation, or at least have us reconsider where we were with Mazarros Field. And again, these are just some overviews. When we have our next discussion on this, two weeks from tonight, we will get into greater detail about the options that are available for us from Mazarros Field. The focus tonight really needs to be focusing on Eastfield, I believe, and the options that are there, and begin to generate questions and have comment on those three options that I presented. But if we go back to the summer of 2012, we began to work up a number of different estimates to look at Mazarros Field. And in doing so, we're looking at different options for a natural grass field. So to remove the field that exists, there's drainage issues with the field. So we'd be looking at removing some soil there, bringing in new soil, installing a new drainage system, reinstalling an irrigation system that would be associated with that. And we're looking at a project that you can see would range from $465,000 to $535,000 for that field. If we were to pursue an artificial turf field, and when we look at that range, that's not looking necessarily at a range of making a field bigger, just looking at the range of types of products that we could potentially choose from. If you wanted to look at a standard turf field versus a geo-turf field, a geo-turf field is something that is much more environmentally friendly, some will say. So we're looking at the different options associated with that. And then the track replacement. And then the track replacement. The track is at the end of its life. If you think of all a track is, is an asphalt ring around the field with a rubberized surface that coats it. We're getting to a point where the rubberized surface is essentially worn through, we've been patching and repairing, but we're starting to experience some difficulties with the base, the asphalt. So there's some necessity to make those improvements. It would be a great, great challenge to try to do any field work without replacing the track because all the, envision all the construction equipment that would have to pass over that field would certainly break it down and damage it. So we're looking at those options. And so if we want to look at the scope of any of this work, whether it's just East Field, whether it's East Field and Mazeros, I think we need to consider overall impacts and a little bit of a timeline here to connect what all these field projects could look like, could have impact on our community, talk about the availability, whether it's for our Irvington School District student athletes, for community groups that use the field. But with this initiative, we'd be targeting a bond referendum in September. And in doing so, we'd look at construction that would begin late June, early July of 2015. Natural turf, and you can see I was conservative here, I went with the cheaper solution, the seed, which certainly saves $100,000, but also produces a healthier ground, healthier turf for our students, take three growing seasons. With the AstroTurf or artificial turf, as we said, the field will be immediately available. And in looking at the difference here in times, spring of 2017, we'd have to think we lose operation of both of those fields from summer of 2015 to the spring of 2017. With any of the artificial turf scenarios, whether it's one in both fields, if that were to work into this scenario, we'd be looking at fall of 2015, maybe fringe on the beginning of a sports season or the preseason work that would have to go on with student athletes, but we're confident that a field would be ready at some point during that season. We also, if we're looking at a bond referendum, we have to consider what our facilities may be. Our buildings, generally speaking, are in good condition, but every once in a while, we have to stop and look at how we have to make some investments in them. And in doing so, there's a number of projects that we could begin to look at. The district has a five-year facility plan that outlines projects that certainly are necessary, but there are projects that could also have a nice return on investment for us. We have a need for heating upgrades, first and foremost, from a comfort standpoint. We have issues trying to control the heat in buildings. In some scenarios, the heat's either off or on. And you picture us, it takes time for the heat to travel through a building, you have areas that get uncomfortably warm while other places are cold waiting for that heat to arrive. And then we have other areas where the heat's controlled and regulated well. We would need to look at installing heating control systems that would be, empower our custodians to be able to better control the heat in our buildings. In doing so, there's going to be a bit of a return on investment here that would be pretty significant. In looking at this, you have to think that we're going to be able to burn less fuel to keep the buildings much more comfortably heated. We have some roof repairs that need to take place. When we look at the five-year plan, we're looking at what comes up next as far, rooftops would be, the Main Street Gymnasium, both the upper and lower roof in that area has kind of hit the end of its life, and that should be considered as well, where we're going to begin to have issues with leaks that will cause other potential damage in the building. Energy efficiency projects, one thing that is a bone of contention for many, many people in Irvington, including me, is the fact that we have lights that burn, many, many lights that burn for 24 hours a day in the high school, and it was how the building was wired. But we've learned that's a significant investment, having to rework all that electricity and install the proper switching to be able to control those lights and have those lights actually turn off at night, or turn off when no one is using that particular space. So when we look at that and we look at the heating upgrades, there's areas there that are going to be a definite return on our investment. There's lavatories, bathrooms that we need to look to address here in the high school, first and foremost, that are going back, some are still original facilities from when the building was built that are outdated and in some desperate need of repair. One consideration may be the conversation that the board has already had this year tied to the space study that we closed the doors on a couple of months back, is looking at the relocation of the district offices. District offices were meant to be temporary nine years ago and are not only a nice, but at a point of disrepair, but exploring the different possibilities to relocate the district offices. But if we're going to pursue, you know, a bond for the fields, we may want to consider these improvements. Certainly, it would be prudent in our investment in maintenance of the building, but it may present that difficulty in this conversation of having to talk about bonding in future years. Certainly the financial considerations. It's easy to talk hypothetically about all this work. We could all sit back and say, we want that field, we want a new track, we know the impacts that it could, the benefits that it could have for our community. We could talk about, looking at our facilities, say we want our students to be more comfortable, we want to spend less money on utility costs, we want to make sure the roof doesn't begin to leak. But we know that there's going to be a significant financial impact here, and in doing so, we have to begin to think about what that looks like for all of us. State aid becomes an equation in bonding, but if we're going to look to receive state aid, we have to have capital improvements to educational facilities, not just fields, not a parking lot, we have to look at the actual academic facilities. If we were to make improvements to the school buildings themselves, we would be eligible for just over 10% of the project covered in state aid. And as we said before, certainly begin to tackle some of the needs that we have present. When we look at all the work that's been done at East Field, just about $200,000 since August of 2012. So when we say $200,000, obviously it's an enormous sum of money, but you're thinking that we've been redirecting that money from other maintenance projects, other facilities, initiatives that we've had in place. But certainly, if we were to move forward with this project, we could recoup a lot of that money through the bond if the board decided to go that route. When we think of the overall financing that the district does, the district has a series of bonds that are out there for a number of different reasons, whether it's the construction of the facility that we're sitting in today, or other building improvements that have happened over the years. At the end of the school year, we do have a bond that expires. That bond would be debt that'd be coming off the table, and that would offset costs associated with any new bonding or referendum initiative that would be considered. Roughly, I think we could say that if we look at the monies that we're financing this year that will come off the table, we're looking at roughly $350,000 a year, which would equate to about three and a half billion dollars worth of bond. So when we think about where we are in this process, and the bit of, you know, I think we talked about different chapters in this process. The first one occurred back in August of 2012. The second, long, long chapter's been the year-plus of all the testing and discussion, the D E C and D O H. I think we're starting Chapter Three today, and that's talking about resolution, that's talking about the future of our schools, talking about the future of our athletic facilities, and of course, future finances of the district. So we're having this conversation tonight. We're eager to hear comments and questions from the board and from the community, and in doing so, we don't anticipate we're going to have every answer for you tonight. We'll collect those questions and comments that may be presented. We're going to come back, two weeks from tonight, as I said, in this very room, and have a second conversation. Not only are we going to come back and kind of reiterate some of the things that I talked about tonight, but we're going to talk about, in greater detail, options from Mazeros Field, we're going to talk about options for the track, we're going to talk about options for enhancing our facilities to address some of those issues that are identified in our five-year plan that I referenced earlier. And from there, we're going to start a journey, a journey about communication, a journey that's going to involve probably a lot of research and dialogue and difficult discussions for community and the board to share in. We're going to look to, we have some timelines, some things that we're going to work to try to hold the board and community to here, and we want to, by February 11th, if feasible, identify the first step, the first decision to be made, to make a decision for the pathway we want to proceed on for East Field. The reason for that is that we have to move forward with getting D E C and D O H approval. Without that approval, it slows down the overall timeline of all the work that needs to be done, not only potential design work associated with building fields, we've had a lot of the design work already done from Mazeros Field, but you have to think of all the application process that we have to go through with S E D, and there's extensive timelines. We have all kinds of timelines for formulating the bond. So we certainly have to try to hold everybody to those timelines here. We certainly will identify opportunities for special forums that will take place, whether it's in communities such as Field Point or other community discussions that take place here and one of the school facilities. But by March 4th, we should be looking to make some decisions about where we want to go with the overall scope of this project. And that's, March 4th deadline is just as important, probably even more important than the February 11th deadline, if we plan on being able to have a referendum on September 14th. So with that said, that was a lot of information in about 40 minutes.
Well, thank you very much. It was a lot of information, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions and comments. I'd like to open it up with the public first. I think that that may address those questions, maybe questions that we also have, and then afterward, we could, you know, ask any questions we have, provide any comment. So, you know, regular rules apply. If you could approach the microphone in the back, please say your name and where you live, and provide your comment or question with the caveat, of course, as Dr. Harrison said, that if we don't have an answer, we'll take the question under advisement and get back to the community. Thank you.
Douglas McLaure, I'm Dr. Street in the Village. I had three questions. Grass versus turf, what are the long-term maintenance costs, and are they factored into any of these budgets? Then my second question was, how many hours per week do our teams require? And is that being factored into, you know, this decision? You've mentioned it, but I don't know what that means in terms of what our teams require. And then how many hours a week do we get out of Mazeros Field?
Douglas, we certainly plan on integrating all that into the 21st. The figures that were shown are the industry standards, so if you go up to 25 to 30 hours on a natural grass field, that, when you, the exceedance, I'll say again, of that figure, then you begin to worry about the wear on a field and that it'll be hard to maintain a quality turf with that. So that was just talking about, I was just speaking to the individual field services. We will do a comparison of our current usage, integrate some community usage, and you'll see how it contrasts with those numbers, but we'll be doing that on the 21st.
Chris, we had estimated, I'm sorry, I'm just...
Well, I was going to say, we'd already done that when we...
But we did it only for Mazeros, so I don't know if we did it for East Fields. I don't recall seeing like the amount of playing time for East Fields, that's a relevant question.
We did it a long time ago.
It was a long time ago, yeah.
Yeah, the initial analysis was done back in the summer of 2012, and we touched on it. Mr. McCormick actually has already completed an analysis of all, for both, not going beyond that, also looking at Upper Dallas Field, Lower Dallas Field, because there's heavy usage with that.
Right.
So he's completed the analysis for our own teams, but now when we begin to integrate community use of the fields, he's adding those figures to the equation that he's already generated, and we will present that on the 21st.
And when, is that going to be available for us to, community board to see?
We will be presenting it on the 21st.
The 21st of January?
Yes.
What was the answer to his first question on the long-term maintenance costs?
That will be addressed on the 21st. We're taking questions tonight, and we'll research.
But honestly, on that question as well, when this was, the original options were laid out for Mazeros Field, which is where we started, that analysis was done as well. So I think it's just dusting those numbers off and updating them with the professionals, but that was presented to, I guess, a year and a half ago, when we started the process. So those that really want to get into it before the 21st can go back and look at the archives and see the presentations from then, but...
Oh wait, are those still on the web?
So as of now, we just don't know the numbers, in short.
I think the folders with, I think we were following 2012 deals.
Right.
So they're still up there?
Yes.
So people could access them?
Yeah, but it'd be nice to bring them to a meeting, so we actually don't have to go back and do our own research.
Well, no, 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 he said that, he said already, all of it's going to be presented on the 21st.
Sorry. Jim Davidowitz, I live in Richmond Hill. Added to that cost analysis between grass and turf is also, what is the average life of a turf field and when does it have to be replaced? I was curious about that. And then, no, there wasn't any really, there really wasn't any information about the history of the problem. Is this predate the use of the field as an athletic field at all? How long has the field been used by the school? Can we point to where the problems occurred from?
Talking about East Field, just East Field?
Yeah, East Field.
Yeah. I think your first question, sir, is related to the previous question I was asking. We certainly, that life of the field would fit into the maintenance, as we look to address. When we look at the history of this, the district acquired that property at one point in time, historically, that entire area, started to become known as, from what we've been, what we've been able to identify, almost as a community dump, that there had been concerns for many, many years about people just randomly dumping things there. There's even documentation going back into the late 60s of the village approaching the school district to ask if they could use it as a dump. The school district, there was never any resolution to that request that we were able to identify, but we were able to document that on more than one occasion, the Board of Education discussed concerns publicly about the dumping that was occurring in the late 60s. They actually put fencing in around the perimeter of the field to try to prevent folks from doing it. And then in the late 60s into early 70s, it was beginning to transition from what was just open space, some remember it as an apple orchard, and some say there's a bit of a valley there, that, all different neat stories that we've heard. But at the end of the day, the board decided to turn it into a playing field. We can find reference of clean fill, and that's how it's quoted, clean fill being brought in to top off what was there to make in the playing field. That all took place, late 60s, right into like '70 or '71.
But to your first question, just going back, I was on the board when we did the initial outlay of the fields, what we found from the turf, artificial turf providers, and there were various different brands and ways of doing it, but at the time, the average life was either 10, between 10, 10 to 15 years before any rehab had to be done to the artificial turf field. I'm sure Dr. Harrison could give more, you know, direct numbers when he lays it out the next meeting, but that's my understanding, is but it's 10 to 10 to 15, depending upon the manufacturer.
I think they use 10 as depreciation, but as more turf fields are up now, and as there's more historical data, I think they were finding that those lasted longer than 10. So they were looking at a slightly longer life. I think that's where we were a few years ago. I don't know if anything's newer.
I guess maybe I'm newer to this process than any of the rest of you, but when you say, at the end of that 10 and 15, or 10 to 15 years, do you have to basically pay the money all over again?
No, 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 no. It would be a re-carpeting, basically. You wouldn't have to do all of the infrastructure and drainage and all that underneath, but the carpet gets worn out.
So we can, we can get costs as to what the cost of re-carpeting would be, this square foot cost.
For aerial rugs or something.
Sir.
Hello, my name is Eric Ollie. I live in Irvington. With regards to the drainage and the responsibilities of the school district versus responsibilities of Dearman Park and the homeowners' association with the, I mean, I assume if the road above the field is catching the water from way up to the water tower and all the new construction up there, that the Dearman Park community is responsible for that runoff? And is there a drain, a sewer on that road right now that's going to catch the runoff so that we would be responsible for less of the runoff? The school district would be, the same way we are responsible for the runoff that would go into the Field Point community? Has that been addressed, and do we know anything about that?
A little too technical for, I think, the folks on up here.
I can address that to some extent. Bridget Fosser, the purple arrows you see, the surface flow from offsite, that does represent an area that's just west of the tower that runs down through a valley, and it travels overland and crosses the driveway that leads back towards the pond. The roads that you're speaking of are actually further to the west and don't really intercept that flow. The roads to the west do have curves, and you have catch basins.
What about those three arrows on the top is a road?
There's a driveway through there.
Yeah. It's a road, though, isn't it?
Yeah, there's, there's a road that, and then there's another road that goes on the other side for the pond.
But the Dearman Park development is above the road. Wait, that's how you access it?
Yeah, and that, but that road goes all the way along that field now. That's a whole picture, right?
There's part of that road accesses two lots in Dearman Park. The rest of it existed for a long time prior that encroached to another house way, a driveway near the old one. And there, there are two catch basins in Dearman Park that, that were, you know, as well thought out and, and they're liable for catching all the drainage. So that, that, where we saw there...
Because I'm only back there.
We can be home all season.
That's from a little hillside below the road. No, I know that, but I mean, we should think in the overall plan of this, if you, if you want to have a natural turf field, that we have to handle the water before it gets to the field. And the easiest way is to handle it from that road. Whose responsibility is, is it for putting sewer line on that road? Is it the school district's responsibility? I mean, that's an old road that's been there for 50, 60, 70, 80 years. I don't think there's a sewer on that road.
The old road or driveway, whatever you determine, doesn't have any curves right now. That is not of the school's property. It, I believe it's part of the building property, a part on Dearman's property. But the majority of Dearman roads, as you sort of say, are to the west of this aerial image, and they direct water further to the west of East Field.
Yeah, but this, this road, there's a road encircling the whole upper part of that field that can catch all the water from the hillside. That would solve a huge part of our problem if we dealt with the water at that point as opposed to when it comes to the field.
It's been a question.
I understand your point.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to get into that.
It's not of the school's property, so other people would have to be involved in that if that was the solution.
But, but Mr. Ollie, we hear, we hear your point, and as you know, the district, being, being so close to that development has had much conversation over the years with, with Dearman Park. And, you know, we're, we're going to try to look at the best options that we can for the, to, to, to deal with the drainage issue on both sides of the field.
And then another question about the drainage is, the drainage for the turf field was included in the turf field estimate. Is that's different than the, the kind of drainage you would need for a natural, a naturalized grass field?
Yeah, by, by design, a turf field includes its own drainage system. So when the rain actually falls, it proceeds directly through the carpet, as Mr. Greddus referred to it, through the rock base. And then there's a piping drainage system that controls the flow that heads to that field. So it would include that, but also connected to that would be the other features that are highlighted here around the perimeter of the grass field.
But to Eric's question, I think we addressed this a long time ago. I honestly, it's been a long time, but I think at one point, the question was raised is if you're going to put drainage in, could you put drainage in that then could be also used for turf if at a later date someone decides they want a turf? In other words, if it, is it possible to do the same drainage and just spend a little bit more money perhaps and then kind of keep that option open later? I don't know.
I, I don't want to answer for land, but I, I would say no. That to install that field, a turf, if you were to go through and put a grass field in now with a proper drainage system, and then we were to come back and put a turf field in 20 years from now, that whole area would have to be excavated and the existing drainage system would be removed to be able to establish a proper base for the new field to sit.
Is that true? Couldn't, you couldn't do, that's true?
I agree with that guy.
I'm sorry?
I, I agree with, with the answer you were given. It's a different type of drainage system, designed differently, intended to work differently. You couldn't use entirely, you make parts of it, but as, the majority of it would be definitely removed on site.
I'm confused about where the, where the cost is coming from in the, in the natural grass fields, where the cost for the drainage, is it the piping to run the water away from the field or is it somehow to collect it and channel it on the field? Because it sounds like what the, the... Artificial turf drainage is just about collecting the water that's there and keeping it from ponding on the field, right? And not moving it away somewhere or...
Oh, it has, yeah, it moves it away.
It, it, why isn't that a similar system, at least the moving away part, why isn't that similar to what you would do for a, a natural field? Because it's the same substance, water, and it has to go away in both cases.
It's two scenarios. In an artificial turf system, you've got a stone base that's current in the base of Dearman that collects it and also stores it and it serves to a purpose. In a natural turf field, you need to collect it and store separately. You're not storing it in the topsoil or in the soil underneath the topsoil. You have to bring it.
Okay. So in a, in a nat, artificial, with an artificial field, you're saying we don't have to worry about the water running off? It just stays under the field in perpetuity or seeps into the groundwater?
I'm saying you, you address it in two different ways.
I, I don't understand.
That with a, maybe if I could clarify, that with a, a natural grass field, there will be a drainage system with a series of pipes that would run around the perimeter of the field beneath the field. When the field becomes saturated, the water will, will drop to the piping system and will be collected in a series of pipes beneath the ground. And eventually, we'll leave the property through the sewer system.
Or, or possibly with these channels through the Field Point house.
That's how we would connect with the sewer system would be through Field Point.
Yeah, right, okay, right. Through, that, that's where the sewers are.
With a artificial turf field, rather than developing a piping system that would occur underneath the grass field, that water would fall through the field, would sit in the rock base and eventually make its way from the rock foundations, shall we say, into the, an exterior piping system, which would make its way from the field into a sewer system. So the foundation of the turf, artificial turf field serves as a function of the drainage as well, whereas a natural grass field, you'll have to construct that system to collect and hold the water to be able to control the flow as it leaves the fields. So you don't overflow a drainage system or a storm sewer down the road in a heavy torrential storm.
But perhaps there's, just to kind of loop back to Robin and John here, I think the, the drainage away from the field is probably common to both scenarios.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
You still need, Michael Bogin, side manager of the Environmental Council, you still need to get the water out of the, you know, out of the field at some point. With the, with the artificial turf field, that, that stone essentially acts as almost like a reservoir, and the water still eventually needs to get out of there, otherwise it will overflow. But you don't need to have the same kind of piping system that you do with a natural turf field where you can't really store the water in the ground. You've got, you know, the root zone and then some fill material, which isn't really conducive to, to store in the water. So you need to get it out in a different way. But, but in both scenarios, it's got to get out, you've got to get into the sewer system.
Is there further questions?
Yeah. I just have one more question.
Sir.
About the, the first approach to putting two feet of topsoil onto the East Field as it presently is right now, is that really a viable option from an engineer's standpoint? Because to me, I would think right away, I mean, the field has incredible dividends in it right away that have happened over time. And if you just dump two feet of topsoil, it's going to continue to happen so that you're going to have to maintain that to some degree. And without doing any excavation work on East Field, I don't see how that could possibly work in the long term anyway, if not the, you know, the near, near future. I would ask an engineer that question.
Yeah, that, that's beyond me.
Yeah, I'm listening to your question. And there's always the possibility of a turf field to, to settle and have undulations. My understanding is there was little maintenance done out there as opposed to a practice field. So maintenance is a key issue with any field to, to avoid that.
But would you have to do excavation work first before you dumped the, the topsoil on this?
I, I think you'd have to remove the, the initial top, initial topsoil or, or root zone. But as far as deep excavations, I don't see a need for that. You'd be putting in two feet or two feet plus, you know, to fill in those undulations. You know, and it would have to, it wouldn't be dumped out there, it would be placed in a compacted and controlled manner.
Are you basically saying that it would be leveled off to the extent practicable when you put the soil down?
Yes, and the, the finished grade would be similar to what's out there existing without the undulations. You're not reshaping or changing the overall direction of the playing field.
And that would require only regular maintenance that would be part of the regular school budget?
I'm not sure how the school would budget it, but it would certainly require maintenance. And that's where Dr. Harrison talked about putting in, putting irrigation to help a natural turf field thrive.
If I could also join in on that question. When, when you're dealing with a natural turf cap and, and with the material that we're trying to, to cap, the state D E C or D O H could say, listen, we want you to have what they call a site management plan that would operate in perpetuity, that would require certain regular maintenance inspections and potentially even annual reporting and things along those lines. So I wouldn't say that it would be routine in a way that, that a field didn't have any issues. It would be routine, but, but it would still be in accordance with a scheduled and a scheduled maintenance plan.
Any further questions from the community?
Yes. My name is Eileen Lox. I live in Field Point. And Dr. Harrison, I want to commend you for an outstanding summary of the issues. I was impressed. I didn't know actually who you were until you sat down. I'm a consultant. And I happen to have a, a background with masters in public health. I would, I'm in favor of optimizing the fields. I think we do have to have a lot better playing fields, and we all know this has been an issue for a very long time. However, in order to assure the bond is passed, knowing the history of what happened maybe eight years ago or so in Irvington with the proposal being artificial turf and the recent failure of the passage of the school bond vote in Hastings on Hudson for artificial turf and the increased awareness of the public about the health, safety and environmental concerns related to artificial turf, and there is a maintenance cost to it and there's a replacement cost. I would strongly suggest, if you want the bond to pass, that the board considers taking artificial turf off the table. I did, do think it would be much more palatable to the community. There'd be much less controversy over the issue. And furthermore, as Dr. Harrison analyzed, if the cost to the taxpayer is neutralized because of the, I guess, you're finishing the payments of a, a bond of 350,000 a year, and you can package in then the maintenance program with the field optimization, no artificial turf. This has a very good chance of passing. So I would suggest that, because otherwise I do think we're going to revisit history and not pass the whole package, which I think would not be good considering especially the, the building maintenance issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Amy Brady. I live here in Irvington, obviously. I was lucky enough to be asked to coach our younger girls' lacrosse teams, third, fourth grade, first second, fifth grade. It's been a struggle to get...
I'm sorry, could you make sure you get him into the mic? I think it's hard to approach.
It's been better?
Is it on?
Is that better?
It's not here. They're all 14, 15, 15 and a half plus.
Is that better?
There you go.
Okay, okay then.
Could you just please repeat your name again?
Sure, Amy Brady. First of all, thank you for all the information that you gave us. It was a wealth of information. I've been lucky enough to be able to help coach some of our younger girls' lacrosse teams. It's a real struggle here to get a regulation-sized field that we can coach our teams on. And while I understand we're a little more low man on the totem pole, it's very important in these younger years that we give our children the opportunity that other school districts have to play these sports. We actually had a great third, fourth grade, successful lacrosse program, but it went, it was very difficult. To try to sit there and practice on a non-regulation-sized field and then go out to a game and, and require our girls to understand the rules on a regulation-sized field is very difficult. I appreciate what the other, the other lady said about trying to get this passed. I think what I'd like to see in January is to really understand where our non-school organizations can come into play with this as far as the time and as far as the quality of the field. I'm not one to speak on the conditions of a turf field and its safety, but I think that there are safe turf fields. And when you go to Dallas Lane Upper, even with the amount of money that we spend to try to maintain it, I'm still having third and fourth graders twist their ankles on the field that we're spending a lot of money on. So if we could just take those couple things in consideration for the January 21st meeting, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Deborah Hargraves. I'm a resident of Irvington as well. The one question I had was again about drainage, and I just wanted to clarify, if it was turf field, you still need to have some type of agreement with the Field Point residents as far as where the water discharges, you do?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay. And secondly, as a follow-up then, do we have a feeling as to what the Field Point residents feel on this issue, whether they prefer turf or not turf? I know we heard from one resident, but obviously to pass this bond, I would think that's an important community that we've reached out to. And I'm curious, not seeing Maria Kashkin here, who I know is a resident of Field Point, if we have a sense of what that community feels.
And I, I was, I was remiss in not saying, Maria's under the weather this evening, so we, that happened like this afternoon, she'll, she'll be better, but that's why she's not here this evening. But Dr. Harrison has began the dialogue thoroughly, I think, with, with the Field Point folks and...
I'm a board member at Field Point, so I was going to take this back around at the board meeting and for discussions.
Thank you.
Great.
We've had conversations with the president and vice president of the HOA. We've provided them with resources that they've requested. We've had a conversation with the homeowner, who we see potentially immediately impacting, being, having the property impacted by the drainage system. The dialogue that we've had to this point has truly focused on the drainage concept and the drainage needs. We have yet to have dialogue about the type of playing surface that would be installed. But you can be assured, Mrs. Hargrave, that that would happen.
And my last question was, as far as the athletic department is concerned, it would strike me that we're not a community that would ever support two turf fields. Do we have an opinion yet as to which field is a better location for a turf field, if we're able to get one at all?
I didn't hear what you're asking.
Do you want to clarify your question?
Just curious, that Mazaro's has always been discussed as a possible turf field, and this is the first, I actually, it occurred to me tonight, that a possibility also exists here at the East Field. I wouldn't think we're a community that would ever support two turf fields, so it's either going to have to be in one or at the other location ultimately. And I was curious whether the athletic department had an opinion as to which is the better location, if any.
Well, I, I guess just on your first point, I, I don't know what the community's going to support yet. You, you may be right, I, I don't know. But the reason that we're even thinking about putting a turf field on East Field was because of what was found underneath. So that's the reason that it was never discussed before. I, you know, I, I...
It was discussed a long time ago.
Maybe.
You know what, but I, I kind of have a similar comment as Deb does, which is, I know we want to keep tonight to East Field, but I think ultimately in terms of making a decision, we really have to look at, as you said in your presentation, the whole picture, because you can't make a decision about East, um, East Field in a vacuum in terms of what's the best use and, and how much money we're going to spend without looking, I think it, you know, as you said, but certainly Mazaro's and then of course figuring out where do we want to be as a district? How do we want to spend our funds over the next five to 10 to 15 years, depending on , you know, debt service and, and where are our priorities? And I mean, I think it just, it's going to come down to, as a community, as a board, as a school, where do our priorities fall and, you know, how does that work? So I, I kind of agree exactly with what you're saying in terms of, you know, turf on one, up for discussion, turf on two, probably completely unlikely.
Even though the, I know we're not going to get into the discussion, but even though the cost of the turf, option three is the same as option one?
Well, we could, we could have the turf. Anyway, we could have the discussion.
I, I don't know if we should, I, I don't know if we should even go down the road because it's...
Well, okay, so maybe, no, right, no comments.
It's all cost issue. It, it... It's a cost issue. If the cost is the same, then it's just a question of turf.
A lot of people get, you know, it's very controversial, but people get concerned about the environmental issue.
Sure. They should go visit Hackley.
But, you know, I guess to me, to me, the question is going to be.
Well, but still, you know, there's five beautiful turf fields over there that you can check out anytime you want.
Related to your comment, just while we're on the subject of things we're not going to talk about tonight. You know, I think there's also, you know, the issue is not only what are all our fields and what, how do we make decisions about the fields? But I think also what configuration, are we in the optimal configuration as regards our athletic program? Do we have the types of teams, sports and everything else we want to have? And are the fields servicing those sports and teams properly? Or is this a time where we want to think about possibly facilities or fields that we would need to change those offerings in some way? Because what's the function, you know, do we have the right? Ultimately, the fields exist only as a means to an end, which is to service the athletics and recreational programs. And I guess the question is, do we have the right programs or not?
Well, I think, and Elaine, if you wouldn't mind, I know we'll provide it to the community outside, but if you could provide John the original presentations that were done in 2012, because I think what you find, a lot of this work was done and what you'll find is the biggest issue with our fields is not underutilization, but overutilization. So, maybe you're talking about cutting back programs, I don't know, but I'm just saying.
I'm not thinking about that.
Well, well, you throw it out there. I think that you.
Wondering, you know, maybe there's, I don't know, maybe there's a sport or whatever that we're not offering or for an age group that we're not offering that we'd want to offer, whatever.
I know the part of the, part of the presentation was an outline of the individual sports that use the fields, the approximate time per week that they use the fields and also the community groups. So, I mean, that information's out there.
According to Artie, I think we asked this question at one point, remember, but I think he felt like, no, there aren't, there's really no other sports that he could think of that we don't offer at this point that would require.
At least that would be done on a field.
Yeah. The other thing about turf is kind of getting back to two turfs and this is going way back. But, you know, part of figuring out what's optimal, putting aside some of the secondary issues, which are very important. But what is optimal in terms of playing time, I think when you get into two turf fields, you know, you also have to weigh, and we're not going there right now, but if you don't put lights in, then you don't optimize the use of the turf field. So, there's only so much playing time you have and if you have two, you know, one turf field and no lights and costs and so, there's a couple of other factors that's one of them that you have to start integrating into the discussion.
Lights is absolutely right.
And, you know, right now, you know, it's not here, but I, not to say it should be here, but I think it needs to be at least addressed as to how you optimize the field and, you know, what's the right configuration across the board.
And so, we are very interested, as we were in 2012, from options from the various community groups to address these other issues, to make whatever way, whether it's grass or artificial turf, easier for the community to vote on as a bond package.
And just as an aside, I know we talked about this a while ago, but I did have some community members approach me before the holidays about, you know, fundraising and that's also something that always comes up. And, and you and I talked about it in December and I did try to get ahold of Gus today, our attorney, to get some more specific answers. But hopefully I'll reach him over the next week or so and maybe we can get some answers lined up in terms of what are our options? If we want to go down that path again to do some outside funding for some of these costs or, you know, how could we work that into the package as well? Or is it time maybe now to start looking at outside sponsorship? Again, people feel very strongly about it, but, you know, I think it's, again, something that we need to touch on.
But we also enjoy large corporate tax deductible donations as well.
So, I mean, we, I just hope that we can get this all done.
I personally do and the district does as well.
But, you know, I just, I just hope that we find a way to get this done expeditiously so that we could try to at least stick to some sort of a timeline like this, which would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions, comments from the community? Ma'am?
Hi, Linda Pierpont. I live in Irvington and I run the youth lacrosse program. So, I have an interest in the little fields for the little people that Amy addressed. And I also have a, some soon-to-be varsity football and lacrosse player, so I have an interest in the big fields. We have ruined the little fields because the big people had to go to the little fields because East Field's been out of commission. And I think that there's not enough community people that even are aware of this. It was a practice field in my lifetime here, way before this new middle school was built. It was little kids soccer. My kids that are out of college now played youth soccer there. I'm sure all those medals affected their ability to graduate from college. Anyway, sarcasm aside, we've ruined Dow's Lane because the big football and lacrosse boys have big 300-pound people on them. And where is that factoring into fixing that when all of this happens? So that the youth sports, like lacrosse and soccer and T-ball and baseball, who use some of those fields, can have clean surfaces down there. So, that isn't in this big plan and I hate to open up a can of worms, but the younger folks in this town need to know that that's part of this grand scheme because once football and lacrosse and field hockey and soccer get back up on the good playing fields, those fields need to be addressed so that kids out at recess at Dow's Lane have a safe place, they're not running around with the football equipment down there. And so that the youth sports teams can have, line those fields for proper practices and games and stuff like that.
Your point's very well taken. I believe the board and the administration and the community is very aware that with the shutdown of East Field for the past year and a half and with the problems that we've had on Mazaro's with the drainage, as you're well aware, on football Saturdays and Fridays, that's made that surface unplayable even for the other sports. It's made those sports go to the Dow's Lane field and take, you know, fields that were already overused and add to that. So, you know, we would hope that by addressing, at least personally, I would hope that by addressing, it's not scientific opinion, but by addressing Mazaro's and East Field, it would take the use off of those lower Dow's fields to make them be able to, you know, revitalize. As to plans to redo those fields, we don't have them yet, but I think it's an important point. It's an important point.
I'm not even sure doing is what I'm saying, just making sure they're maintained.
Absolutely. That's the issue, right.
They just, they need to have a little bit of grass on.
No, absolutely. Absolutely right.
You bring up a really good point and by framing it with Dow's Lane, which is, you know, years ago and we went through this before and it went down. I know people said, oh, it's not going to survive. And now I know people, some people say, well, you did survive, but you know, you survived by taking a toll on something else. And like, we didn't survive unscathed, you know. So, in terms of our facilities and in terms of where the kids are playing and what we've done to those facilities, you know, that's a really good point that we need to, we need to be very clear that, you know, there was a cost to the last, say, eight, 10 years.
There's a huge amount of people in our community who are, what's in it for them? And quite frankly, at this point, the only thing that's in it for me is to watch cute little kids get to play lacrosse because I'll be running that even after my 10th grader's gone. My other two kids are out of college, so it's not about what I want for my family, it's what I think the community needs. And to that end, everybody who's here needs to get out and have their first, second and third grade friends' parents get up here for this because they're going to be in high school in a blink and people have to get up here and care about what's going on. It's not just about sports either. It's about the band coming back from their summer vacation and practicing and then they can't play at halftime of a football game because that football game got moved to a turf somewhere up in Poughkeepsie. So, they're not going to spend the money for an extra bus for the band to go up there too. And yet those kids left the beach also in August, like the sports team's kids. So, it's, it's more than just sports and it's also about the Saturday night, not having those lights with the smelly whatever diesel and having maybe a few lights so that the community comes and Dr. Harrison brings his kids and we're selling hot dogs and the whole town's up there. And yeah, we're not going to be Friday night lights in Texas because that's not what New York small school football and soccer and field hockey games are about, but it creates a community spirit. And if we could pull the town together to understand, this isn't just about five or six sports, it's about a whole bonding of a community.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the community?
I was just, Eric Oligan, sorry, and I was just sledding at Dow's Lane and I will, I will affirm that there are, there is football equipment down there still and we were using one of the tackle dummies. It was right at the fence where when we came to the bottom of the hill, we didn't hit the fence because we were hitting the tackle dummy. But I thought maybe that's not the best way to treat that equipment and it should be put in some way. There's also a big sled of stuff up on the upper part of the Dow's Lane field. So, I just, I just thought maybe we should put that away tomorrow. Thank you.
Phil, will you, Phil, will you take care of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Phil has it, Eric. Phil has it. I guess, now I know that a lot of questions have been answered. I'll turn over the board. I did want to say a couple of things first, just from, I guess maybe having the most gray hair of anybody up here.
Questions first? Because I had more, I had some more questions.
Yeah, I'm going to end up with a question, but I want to just make a few comments to kick things off. I mean, this to me has always been, since we started this a couple of years ago, not a fields issue, but as other people have mentioned, a community issue. I mean, it affects everyone in the community, I believe, whether you have kids in the school or not. And so, to, to look at it as, well, you know, just the parents and kids in the school want new fields for their kids is not true. I think that, I don't speak with a lot of hyperbole, but I haven't spoken to a person who's moved to Irvington during the recent rush of home sales, who has not come here in some part because of our schools and because of our facilities. So, I think that it, it means something to all of us in the district, whether you have kids or not, as to the state of our facilities and having better facilities, I believe, are going to keep the home values of Irvington high. I mean, the East Field issues were found after the board and, you know, clearly John wasn't on the board then, so he gets to take a pass on this one, but, you know, the East Field issues were found after the board agreed to take on the fields issues and finally do something about an issue that's been out there for a long time. I'd like this board to renew its commitment to address the fields issue, as Mrs. Kerner said, and to do so this year. I don't believe we should kick the can down the road any further now that we understand the state of play on East Field. But I do believe that it is in the best interests of the district and the community to deal with the fields issue, not in a vacuum, but, but we need to deal with it along with our other facilities' needs. Mrs. Kerner also said that. I think it's the only way to properly present this to the community as a comprehensive bond, dealing with both the fields and our other facilities' needs. I think that serial bonds or multiple bonds to deal with the various issues is not in the best interest of the district or, or the community. So, I think that, you know, while this was a good kickoff, I'm looking forward to maybe the second meeting after this where we bring all of this together and we talk about the fields and our other facilities' needs as, as one whole. And I apologize, I forgot what my question was, but that's the end of my initial remarks. I open it up to the rest of the board for any questions or comments that you have.
I've got a long list because I think I'm in the, I guess I'm in the position of knowing the least about this subject, so I probably have the most questions. I'll try to stick to the, there are a lot of broader issues, but what else we should be doing other than East Field. I just want to focus on East Field because I think that's, you know, that's what we're, we're mostly here for. What can, I'm having trouble understanding at Ru, what the basic, I understand that there's junk in the soil and that certain metals are at too high a concentration, but I don't really understand what that means. What specifically, what specific problem does that create for us? I guess that's the end of the question. You know, I know it sounds bad, but yeah, but exactly what does that mean? And what do we have to do about, do we have a report? Do we have an analysis of that issue? This probably happened, has happened before, I never saw it, so. Yeah, and we just also add, I know the field, you know, have, as a parent of kids who are playing soccer on, on that field, I know the fields were in lousy shape before that, but people used them, but.
Michael Bogan, side project Razzle, I'm the environmental council for the, for the district. We've, it's a, it's a good question and when we've been talking about elevated levels, what we mean by elevated is in comparison to standards that New York State passed back in, enacted back in 2007 that are essentially soil cleanup objectives for different types of uses. They're use-based standards. And the one that applies to athletic fields that's typically used by the state is what they call the restricted residential use standard. And what they mean by that is it's restricted in that there needs to be some follow-up maintenance of whatever soil cap that you're going to put on or, or field that you're going to put on needs to be maintained in perpetuity. So, it's a restricted standard in that you can't just do anything on it even after you, you put the soil on top. The, the exceedances that we're talking about here are a couple of different types of metals. I think the most significant one that we found was a single lead exceedance that was significantly above what the restricted residential standard is. Now, when we're talking about a particular exceedance, it's really that. It's a particular data point in the whole context of data points that were taken throughout the entire athletic field. And I don't know how many samples there were overall, but it was certainly dozens and maybe even more than that over the course of several different rounds of studies of that field. And this one data point stood out. And that's why in, I believe it was option two, we talk about addressing that data point and a couple of others. There were two other metals, I think, that we identified that significantly exceeded that, that state restricted residential soil cleanup objective. If you were to take the average of, oh, excuse me, of all the samples together, they would probably be far underneath what's required for the restricted residential standard. So, one could take the position, hey, let's go back to the state and say we don't need to do anything. I think this board believes and the consultants believe that that's not the most conservative approach to take when it comes to a risk-based analysis. You want to try and be less risky and the less risky approach is to either take these elevated areas out and get rid of them or just to cap them with two feet of soil, which in New York State at least is considered to be a standard remedy for, for this type of exceedance.
And when you say, when you say you have to maintain it in perpetuity, what does that mean?
Well, what that means is that in other instances in which I've been involved, and unfortunately, this isn't the only athletic field in Westchester County that's had issues with construction, demolition, debris in the fields. The state has taken the position that you need to essentially enter into what would effectively be a deed restriction or a restrictive declaration that the district would report against the property that says, in the future, we're going to make sure that if, let's say, when, once a month, somebody's going to look around if there are bare spots on the field or if there are divots or washouts because of a bad storm, we're going to go back and we're going to put soil back on there and we're going to replace our divots and make sure that the, that the turf, whether it's artificial or natural, is being maintained so that the risk of anybody coming into contact with that native material that, that we have out there right now is, is always kept at a minimum.
And can we just remove that native material somehow so it's not an issue ever more? I mean, if it's just in one particular spot in the field by excavating it somehow?
Well, that's, I think that's really essentially what option two is doing. It's saying, let's take what's there now, where we know there are elevated levels, and let's just get it out. We'll get it out and that way we won't need to worry about those areas in the future. And then we'll put a smaller amount of material over that because we've now removed the exceedance areas. Nevertheless, you still have construction and demolition debris that's below that. I mean, there are bricks, there are, you know, rocks, there are pieces of concrete, there are pieces of asphalt, there could be pieces of metal. You don't ever want people to come into contact. You don't ever want people to come into contact with those, with those materials because it's a, it's a, you know, it's a danger to people using the field. So even with that, you're still gonna want to have in place a maintenance plan where you say, in, you know, going into the future, we're gonna make sure on a regular basis that this field is kept so that the, the chance of becoming exposed to that substrate is, is kept at a minimum.
But, but remember too, and just because I, you know, Dr. Harrison and I and Mr. Whitney, last year were sort of really involved on the calls with all of you, dealing with the testing. You know, it, it's good, you know, to John's question for the public to know, when this testing is done, it's not as if every inch of a field is tested so that you can take out exactly where you find every little piece, that's not the way it's done. It would be cost prohibitive to do that, to do what you're suggesting, John. You'd literally need to excavate the entire field.
Right.
Well, but, but option two, if I'm remembering correctly, is saying there are particular spots, the one, that 1%.
Where, where it was ta, where it was tested.
Yeah, that's the areas where we would actually remediate in that option two. So we are acting as if we know, Bob, so.
Not, well, we're not, because, but, but the, well, but the.
Focusing on particular areas, or am I missing something?
Well, what, what, you, what, you know, the, the problem with option two is that option two requires further excavation, which could cause for us to find further issues, which would cause the need for further remediation. That's, that's the issue with option two.
But.
We, we've not looked under every inch of the ground. The reason that option one is at least preferable, I believe, to the, to the consultants, and I believe it's the preferable approach, is that you're capping the entire thing without doing any further excavation.
Well, I don't, I don't disbelieve that, I just want to understand it.
Yeah, but, but that's the point, it would require.
Understand it, I don't think, a lot of people aren't gonna understand it, but.
Well, but, but let's be clear what it, what it means. It means that option two is further excavation of areas that have not been tested, which could lead to more problems.
Okay.
Is that really what option, I thought option two is only excavating the three areas that tested hot?
That, that's, right, that's correct.
Had, had exceedances.
I, I think, I think what, what Bob is trying to say is that once you start digging around in this stuff, we have, you know, we have, you, you, your investigation is necessarily always incomplete. There's no such thing as a complete investigation. You, you test here, you test there, what, well, what's in the middle between here and there?
And when you get in and you see the stuff to the side of your hole, what do you need to do?
Right, when you start digging, you don't, you don't.
That's a very good question, though. Do we have an obligation to keep testing?
We do not. You know, I mean. We do not have, we do, we, DEC right now is satisfied with the investigation that we've done.
Okay.
They said you've tested enough. When you dig, is there a requirement that we find out what is at the endpoint? That we reach some sort of a clean endpoint? That's not clear, we haven't gotten into those types of discussions yet with the state. Typically, they want to know what's, what's left behind, what's at the bottom of that excavation. So my guess is, they would say, okay, take a grab sample of what's left behind at the end. And what if that grab sample is hotter than, than what we dug out?
Right.
They'll say, all right, well, dig that out too, dig out a little more. You, you don't know, but there, there's always a chance of that.
Are we, is option one also involving the same sort of digging, but just more topsoil, or?
No.
Oh, there's no digging?
No, in option one.
No digging, we're just gonna cover it with more so we don't have to dig.
In, in New York's, in New York State, there are what are called presumed remedies anytime you're dealing with this type of material. And a presumed remedy is one that you can just implement. And New York State, two feet of, of clean fill material on this type of material is a presumed remedy. So you can just put two feet on, call it a day, and, and get on with your, with your life if that, if that's what you choose to do.
You keep referring to New York State, is it significantly different than other states on that particular point?
Uh, it, it, it does vary from state to state, and so, New York State is the, where we are and, and in this.
Yeah, I think we're stuck here.
Yeah, I mean, in other states, it's, it's less restrictive. In, in New Jersey, there are, there are other options that you could do when you would average all of these numbers. And you would say, hey, if you take the average of all of these numbers, you're less than the standard, so don't worry about it.
Well, you know, I also think we should try to, you know, whatever the legal requirements are, it's good for us to know because there's, there's risks there and there are compliance costs and everything else. But we also have to think about what's, whether there are dangers for the.
That's correct.
Kids and adults involved in using these fields, right? And, and what's the, you know.
And just.
Those are, those are issues we have to be, unfortunately, those issues existed for the last 30 years too.
I was gonna say, well, John, I mean, one, some of the issues that we're talking about, when we talk about dangers, we're not necessarily talking about people being exposed to something horrible and, and, and having an issue with that. The dangers really with construction and demolition debris are mostly physical. They're mostly stuff that eventually floats up to the surface, be it a tire or a, or a piece of rebar that was buried there long ago that becomes exposed. And somebody trips on it and rips open their foot or their hip or, or, or something like that. Those are the, those are the primary concerns that you have with this type of material.
Although in most cases you see that presumably when you're checking to see if the field is in playable condition, don't you?
Sometimes you don't see it until it's too late.
The tire or?
So it seems like there's, there's almost two visions of option one and option two. And I hear, tonight I've heard some of you say, option one would give you a bigger barrier, so that's better. But then I'm kind of also hearing, well, by removing the identified materials, that might be better. So how do we figure out, is, is there one that might be safer for the kids who are gonna be playing on it?
It's hard to answer what, it depends what you mean by safer.
Well, wait, the identified materials, these are, those particular areas are the hot materials, right?
Or just the ones that have been tested so far.
Yeah, but then there's also the, but, I think his last point was about all the solid, the weird solid things that might be sharp or whatever, and those aren't necessarily toxic, but they're just.
And the question is, are you, do you feel safer with two feet on top of that or one foot?
That's what I was gonna say.
It's just a perspective, I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's.
It's taking out what we know and putting one foot on or putting two feet on, is that?
Point, point, a point of information, have we had problems in the past? Well, I know that the, the field was horrendously uneven and people were having physical injuries, but there are material, were people injured by the materials poking out?
Not, not during my tenure, but I have heard stories where there are times where a piece of metal or a piece of concrete have worked its way through the surface and a student athlete or a community member was cut or injured by falling on an object that worked its way through the soil.
Okay, that's good to know.
And that's why, Ms. Kerner, that's why I was gonna, to say, what you mean by safer really depends. If you have two feet of material, there's less chance of some, you know, piece of concrete migrating up through the, through the surface. In terms of exposure to contaminants, like chemical-type exposures, either one is equally protective.
And so your, Bob, so your preferences as our consultants is the first option with the two feet? Is that, or do you not have a preference?
Well, you'd have to ask the engineers, but I don't think the consultants have expressed any particular preference.
Yeah, it's, but, the, the, the issue with the trees that have, would have to be removed, that's an issue that comes up with, well, first of all, the trees are on the, is it the north side of the? I'm trying to think, I was walking through that area maybe a week ago, so.
So, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but the trees, generally speaking, would be in this area right here.
Right, okay, okay. And, right, and how much of that area is owned by the district, do we know?
Yeah, it's all.
How far back does our, this district land go? There, there's a grove of trees, kind of woods back in there, right?
I, I don't know how deep the property line goes, but.
There's a hill, I think, also.
As soon as you get off the field right here, about 10 feet in, it starts to go uphill. But this, it's all, all, all the work that would be done, with the exception of the discussion we had about drainage, would be on district property.
Okay.
So that is comfortably on our property.
Right, and, and what, I just want to understand why, if you put two feet of fill and you need the extra room to, to clear the trees?
Is that a prescribed remedy? What does the act for to cover an area? Now, if you have trees out there that are continuing to grow, continue with the soil. So one scenario is to move the trees and establish a clean surface that you can maintain. So that's to maintain the complete soil. Another option that we talked about with the DEC is to simply fence the area off and quarantine. I was gonna try to mitigate or minimize the exposure.
Quarantine the, the, the existing field off, you mean? Put a fence around the existing field? What?
Instead of clearing the woods, simply, not simply, but to fence around it so that people can't get in, it can't be exposed to that.
Wait, the hazards are where the trees are?
There's, there's some.
You know, where the field is. Fill and things.
The trees are grown, there's, there's still in those areas.
Because the trees have spread out, I see, and the, well, because I was one, originally, I had this totally different line of thinking about this, which is I, when I first understood that we were thinking of removing the trees, I was assuming that was with the goal of trying to expand this field so would accommodate better playing fields or different playing field options. Are we, is anything like that on the table at all? I mean, are we satisfied with what we can do with this existing field versus having a slightly larger field? Because it does seem like there's room there where those trees are.
It's an interesting thought and something we did look at. Because of where that area is, you don't gain usable space in terms of soccer field or cross country field or, yes, soccer field or, or little exercise field shown out there.
So there's no way to get more than one playing field?
If you wouldn't add a soccer field, you wouldn't necessarily add any width to it because you've got a restricted point at the bottom of each there of that plant. So you just can lean width into wooded area, you still have a pinch point elsewhere. And if you rotate the field, you know, it's playable and fixed.
Sorry, pinch point being this, this area here.
That's still a pinch point there, so the beam's facing the east, it doesn't follow the current trajectory.
Okay, okay, thanks. The, the issue with drainage is, is this a new issue that's related to the toxicity? Or is it just the old drainage issues that, kind of while we're trying to address, improve the fields, we think it's a good idea to deal with the drainage as well? It's not a, is this new in any way? Or is it, it's not related to any of the, the issues that have come up with Eastfield in the past, or recently, right?
I can't say it's new, I don't have the full history that, so the board members may have.
Yeah, the drainage system's been there forever. And I think the reality is, if you want to put a little kind of field in, it's not gonna last very long if you don't address the drainage system.
Right.
So you can do it.
Why is that, is it an erosion issue that?
Can I just, Chris did say in his opening remarks, John, that, that it was the opinion of our experts that we would not get approval from DEC without a drainage plan.
So that makes it a toxicity issue?
No, no, it's a drainage issue.
It's, yeah.
Why, why would DEC care about drainage per se?
Well.
But that's again.
That's, that's, that's really true. DEC is always, DEC has a charge of, of being concerned about public health, safety, and welfare of the environment. If you're putting, let's say, a foot or two feet, whatever it is, of, of fill material in an area, they need to know what's gonna happen with the water that runs off of that area. They, they, you know, they don't want it pooling, they don't want it undermining the, the integrity of the material that you're bringing there, they need to know how you're gonna deal with it. If you just let it sit there, that means that whatever your remedy is, isn't really gonna be effective. They want to make sure that the water's gonna run off, not, not a toxicity issue, they're not concerned about it carrying hazardous materials elsewhere, but they are concerned that the cap, if that's what you want to consider it, is being maintained appropriately, which means dealing with the stormwater runoff.
Then why is the drainage an optional issue here? I don't, it's, it's drainage, and I'm not really sure I understand whether the drainage is required to get DEC approval in, in your opinion, or whether it's really an option?
I don't think I, I listed it as an option, I think I listed.
It was like an add-on to this thing.
Well, you just broke out the cost, is what it was.
I broke out the cost, you can clearly see the difference between grass field one and grass field two.
And because drainage is inherent to the artificial turf scenario, the $1.4 million scenario, the other two scenarios have two different cost profile for the field itself. And the drainage, if you recall, remains the same.
Right, okay, it's the same drain, all right. And, but, but the cost, but then there's a separate cost for some sort of irrigation system if we wanted to do that. It's kind of paradoxical that we would be paying both to take water away and bring it in.
Such as grass.
Right. But did we break out the drainage from irrigation? Because those are really, one is an option, one is not an option.
I don't think you gave us numbers for irrigation.
We, we can do that, but I think.
Is it included in that?
I'm sorry?
Is the irrigation included in your drainage?
Oh, it is included in drainage.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, it says drainage.
I did not realize that.
So.
I, I think it comes down to, maybe not the same exact maintenance issue that Michael discussed, but it comes down to maintaining the surface. And the, one, maintaining the playing field to be able to irrigate the grass for it to grow, but it also turns into a maintenance issue if you wear through the grass. Now we started having undue wear on the actual soil cap that is there as well.
Yeah, I, I'd argue that, I mean, we, you could, we could break out the cost, of course, but you, you need to look no further than the field right next to Dow's Lane as to how, just in one, you know, summer season of soccer, that, that, the grass is all gone because there's not irrigation.
Summer season?
Uh, whatever it is, the fall season, whatever it is for the, for soccer, for both.
Both fields are decimated.
They're decimated, just, you go down and check it out now. It's, there, there's, there's, there's no irrigation. And so without irrigation, how could we expect that a new?
Is that because of irrigation or because of overuse?
It, it's a combination of both.
I guess we don't know, I mean, do you really know that for a fact, that it's irrigation?
Uh, if you see how dry it is and the dust bowl that it turns into, yeah, it's not getting enough water. I mean, a gra, I mean, it makes sense, John, that a grass field needs adequate water.
Yeah.
And if it has more water, then it's gonna maintain itself better than one without water. I, you know.
Yeah, I.
Robin Briggs had a good point to answer your question, John. The rec department really restricts the use of memorial field, and it's not irrigated. And it was in much better shape. So it really is, you know, the, the overuse that was caused, as Linda described, because of the still over.
Right, right, it's not like, you know.
But they, but they were dust bowls of the highest order.
Right, but they're dust bowls because the grass gets worn away and then you get a dry week or two and, and that's gonna, yeah.
But I actually, I, you know, I actually think it would be interesting to see the difference. Sheen, it's probably incrementally not so much more to irrigate. And if we're looking to create a field that we're gonna, you know, optimize its use, it might make sense. But there's no downside to seeing if it's break out of the cost.
I think we also just, I mean, the, the district is somewhat, has somewhat of a reputation in not taking very good care of its fields, and maybe that's because they're overused. But it'd really be good to have somebody with, maybe our consultants have that, with an expertise in maintaining these fields, to tell us what, what are the right things to do, you know, and a.
And, and that's a conversation, I think it's been had multiple times in the past before.
But we, you know, well, for example, I walked over Mazeros Field last week and, you know, wondered, does anybody seed this thing? It's just mud, basically.
Yeah, but you know, John, John, if you ever, you probably have notes from this from how many meetings, Lee?
There, there is a maintenance plan that Gary Knowles, our director of buildings and grounds, presented last summer. And they work with the people that maintain the, the communities' fields. They've consulted with other groups in the past, they overseed the field, they, they spread, work topsoil into the ground, fill any divots there. They have a, a pretty comprehensive program. Last year, I should say, that we also, there were some names tossed around about some natural turf experts that had been consulted in the past or that work in this part of the country, and asked if they'd be willing to come talk to us about how to best maintain fields. And I can tell you, and I don't, I remember one of the gentleman's, Chip, that when I spoke to Chip, he said that if you're looking and committed to maintaining, developing grass fields, I, I, I'd be glad to consult on a project, but I don't want to participate in a discussion when you're talking about a bond referendum where there's turf and grass involved. And because they feel that they're hired hands to just to inform an argument and then push aside. And they weren't willing to come in in the midst of the conversation we were having, right?
The other thing is, I, I believe that our facilities people also talked to all the country club. Robin Kemp had set them up with the people there about how to maintain natural fields. And the other thing is, is a conversation we also had many times in the past, which was, how do you spend money to keep the fields in good? how do you spend money to keep the fields in good shape, but not throw good money against bad? If it's just, if you're going to reseed and reseed, but you're not going to rest the fields at all, then it's going to last maybe an hour, and then it's gone. So I think over the course of time, we've really tried to optimize the use of our resources. So I think in September, the fields really do look pretty great. I'm always impressed with what a great job you do already in your, in, well, the maintenance guys. But then by the end of the year, even, you know, it doesn't make sense to reseed when they're on it for eight hours a day or whatever.
Do you have a few questions?
I'm just kind of looking at my notes. Yeah.
You can always come back.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
If I can just interject one thing, and I'm sorry, Mr. Wood, but in my notes, I have been able to find that the irrigation component of that 477 is $105,000.
Oh, great, thanks.
And what is it involved? We're going to put pipes and sprinkler heads or whatever?
Yeah, there's going to be irrigation zones that would be established and lines that would be run underground, the controller and pump system that will pump the water when it's turned on.
Sorry, how much, what, one?
$105,000.
$105. And the rest, so the rest is drainage, or?
Can I go?
Yeah.
Okay. What is our estimate for the impact of the trucks on Heritage Hill? Do we really think we will have to repave that with the 478, or whatever it was, trucks? Because you mentioned it in your opening remarks, and I think if, in fact, we are going to have to repave the hill in either one of those scenarios, that should be part of our estimate as we are.
I think it's a realistic concern. I don't know if we'll realize the, it may not be an impact you see year one, but it may shorten the life of it. But when we paved it two years ago, it was just over $100,000.
Do a lot of trucks use that road now? I mean, for, say, Dearman Park, whatever it's called.
Those construction vehicles and many vehicles that are servicing school facilities.
And school buses, I guess, are having.
Yeah, of course. But not nearly the magnitude or weight that we'd be seeing with tractor trailer loads of dirt coming.
Is there, is it clear that if we do the two feet of the cap as opposed to one, that the two will really suppress the underlying material and will make for a better playing field? In other words, we know that two is, two feet is safer, sort of in our back-of-the-envelope analysis. Is it, does it also create a better playing field because it's less likely that anything will poke up? Or there, to Eric's point, there's more soil to grade and create a smoother field? I'm trying to think of the pros and cons of option one.
That's an important question.
Two is better than one if you think about material coming up through, and that's again.
Wait, wait, no, what's the? Two feet, two feet.
Oh, two feet, right, right, right.
Option, option one has two feet.
I should have.
I got you, too. I thought you were saying.
Yeah, option three has no feet, right.
But here's another point that you mentioned, which is the underlaying, which is, have the underlayings stopped? Are they doing lack maintenance, were they due to original settlement? You know, the cause of those, how long they've been there, how long they've been here, has a history to really answer that question. What I think we have seen is, in the construction area we saw, we didn't see a lot of organs, we didn't see a lot of water, things that are embodying, changing, making voids, and that itself. It was all bricks, it was all metal, it was all hard stuff. When it was built, wasn't built loosely, and all the time was compacted. Probably hasn't actually been completed, I don't really guarantee that. But it's been there for quite a few years.
I guess what I remember I'm asking a relative question. Is it likely that option one will create a better playing surface than option two?
For a playing surface?
As a playing surface.
One will make a better playing surface than the other, because you're still grading out.
Right, so the issue is not about the quality of the surface, it's about the presumed safety.
Presumed safety and then the underlying issues that of the.
Right. And then lastly, I think, I just want to address this image here, that I think even though it looks like we would be using this field as a regular playing field that would be somewhat equal to Mizarro's, Mizarro's, we've talked as a board about the fact that we're not prepared to open this up to a public field where we would have regular play, you know, like it would be like a stadium kind of thing, correct? I mean, there's no place for people to sit. We're not talking about putting in stands, parking would be an issue until we address the parking lot in that lower, well, the upper parking lot. But it's not really a field that is prepared to be a full-on, no. So I just, it's an important point, that it's, we're restoring East Field to being a very good practice field with the positive.
So it's all community use.
Exactly.
Community game use. But we're not, we're not considering the development of this space. They'd be able to host a magnitude of a high school sporting event where you would have a larger number of spectators potentially, and billing bleachers and so forth.
Use contest?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, and people, people could sit on.
And modify sports? Would they play a thousand?
We would look to go back to what was there in the past, which included those types of activities.
But is there no room for bleachers or anything like that? If we want to have, I mean, is that the issue, Phil? Basically.
I hope so, that it just wasn't built into this current cost estimate, but I think.
And there's room, isn't there, for it, if you wanted to install it?
There could be room, maybe where the baseball diamond is.
Around the other side, you know, which is long.
You'd need pathways and all of that stuff leading down and everything, yeah, it would take.
Well, just, you just walk along the edge of the field somehow.
Well, you'd have to get through the dirt parking lot and sort of over the little hillside now to get into it.
Yeah, I guess, but.
They didn't play horse racing across.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you're going to have, people are going to have to, players are, users are going to have to get to that field, too, right?
I guess what I was also just pointing out is that it really wasn't part of our spec here to land as a, not only return East Field to being a practice field, but make it a actual competitive field that would allow for people to come from other communities and watch their team. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, the Dobbs Ferry Turf is not a regulation size. It's a practice field. But that little turf in front of Dobbs Ferry High School is used only four hours a day because it's just pouring rain, you can still go play a little even cross game there, and there won't be falls in the mud. And it's not regulation size, it's very.
I hear that.
There's no wages there.
I'm just speaking of some of the other features that you might need, like stairs, you know, guard, you know, things that.
I think if you were to go that route and make it, you would start to really consider ADA compliance.
Well, that's, that's it, yeah.
Right.
That maybe isn't fully into the plan.
Right, right. I just would say, just to sum up from my perspective on this discussions tonight, I agree with the comments, I think Ms. Watt summarized my position pretty well. And, oh, that's very close to what I was thinking, is that I think artificial turf, generally speaking, especially two turf fields, is just hard to imagine that this community would be prepared to approve a referendum of two artificial turf fields. And since our purpose over the next couple of weeks is to really consider East Field apart from everything else, even though that is very difficult, I think that from my perspective, it's all about the grass, and it's really about one versus two. I actually came in tonight thinking that the option two was the more attractive scenario simply because it was less expensive and fewer trucks. After hearing some of the dialogue tonight about the possible safety issues, the possibility that digging, excavating soil would actually create additional problems, I think I'm actually leaning towards option one. And I think in any case, whatever option we choose as a board to support, we have to be absolutely rock solid convinced that this is the best option for the community because I think we can't envision any scenario in which we do not renovate and restore the East Field. I mean, it's, it has to happen. We do not have enough fields in this community, and the field right now is not playable, and we have an obligation, moral and otherwise, to make it playable and to deal with the remediation that, you know, we have promised D E C and D O H. So, you know, it's just, to me, it's a matter of option one or option two, and I have a slight bias to option one.
I mean, I think that's a, when you say that, you know, we have to get East Field back, I think that has a lot to do with the timing of this, which is, and kind of the.
It's hard to determine.
That has to do a lot with the timing of kind of this meeting, and also why we're kind of pulling the other stuff in instead of what's driving what, is since we feel like we have an obligation to address the East Field issue, and it has to be addressed with the D E C and the D O H, then the thought of just doing East Field seems less than ideal. So it's a little bit why East Field is driving everything now, but hopefully we'll end up in the right place for everything. I just have like two really, one or two really quick questions, but when we're looking at getting information, is it possible to, for the next meeting, maybe to get some of the maintenance cost information on turf versus grass? I know we've done that over time, we should have that somewhere.
It's on our list.
Okay. And then, in terms of, you might have said this already, but in terms of growing the grass, is it safe to say that two feet would be better soil for the grass roots? Or is it the same, the two feet versus one foot?
The soil, in either case, you're not having to be a obstacle, per se.
Okay.
Your root zone, the grass is extended.
So it's the same?
Yeah, or extend that one, it's generally less than that.
I'm sorry, what?
It's generally less than that. I mean, right now, the money still is two inches in some.
So it wouldn't matter, either scenario, same impact?
Four, six, eight inches is more desirable. It's a deeper root zone, the more healthy the grass is, the more it can repair itself in some minor damage. You know, if you have a shallow root zone and it gets trampled over in the sport, it's likely dry, it's likely conditioned, it's a harder time to come.
So then in your, would you have a preference in terms of sod versus the extra six months for the natural grass? It sounds like you're saying maybe the natural grass would be a better long-term choice?
Generally, it is a better long-term solution. The part that I mean is used, but.
Right.
The natural turf that are damaged the seed.
And the cost is that the various teams and programs will have to use other fields and overuse those fields for another season.
Another season.
Basically. Well, three versus two, I thought, is the sod versus grow your own.
Correct.
Right. Sod versus seed.
And there's then, going with the seed, there's approximately, that was an estimate, about $100,000 savings.
Right.
So it's associated with seed over sod.
Right, kind of an added benefit. And then, that's like, I have one thing not East Field, but just to put in for future, like, just the check number is very high. I'm assuming that's because that's the cost of the asphalt. So I'd just like to see some more information of that as we move forward on the check.
That was part of that last, yeah.
Yeah, just because it's, it used to be like 25 to 40,000, probably just for the rubberized surface.
That was the rubberized surface.
But, yeah, so the rest of it, I don't know, probably we'd looked at in the past.
When we had the original conversation, there was a figure that we discussed that was just a restoration, which was to apply a new rubberized surface. However, the asphalt itself is starting to become compromised, and that if we were to build a, certainly a turf, artificial turf field, it would be ripped up and destroyed to be able to put the basin. Even if we put in a new grass field on Mizarro's, the construction vehicles and that, it's inevitable that there would be damage to the space, it'd be hard to be able to preserve it, I think was the dialogue that we had.
So once we're doing a new field, it almost, it almost seems imperative to redo the check as well, from what you're seeing?
Yeah, it's like having a nice old classic car, the new interior and a rusty outside. I don't know. I, that's what I, my guess would be, but we can break out the cost. We have that number, which, those numbers need to be adjusted for current, you know, oil prices with asphalt and so on, I would imagine, but.
Just to remind you that, I'm pretty sure that the Mizarro's grass solution, which we discussed, involves a different drainage system than what would be up in East Field, right? The, because we had, we described a lattice.
It actually would be similar.
Similar, okay. But it still would be entirely new drainage.
From the soil.
Yeah.
Yeah, completely separate, yeah.
Do you remember that?
Well, there is, but it doesn't work.
Oh, okay. I thought they said they built it with no drainage.
A couple things I want to get back to, if I could. One question I have is on your schedule. The, why are you looking at a, it stood out to me as having the bond issue in September, and then you've got this long period between September and June when you start construction. What is that? Is that for planning?
Or is that just?
Because you can't do anything till school's out, or why is that?
It's for following all of the rules and regulations. Once the, once the bond referendum is passed, all of the plans and specs have to be submitted to New York State S E D, and right now, they have a 26 to 28 week wait period. Then after you get that approval, which we estimate will hopefully be April, then you have to go out to bid for your major contractors. Has to advertise for a month, have the bid opening, board has to approve it. So we started with a schedule of construction beginning, end of June, beginning of July, and then worked backwards to see when we would need to have a referendum.
I see. So there isn't any huge benefit to doing the bond, trying to accelerate this process and doing the bond referendum in June?
I don't see it.
No, because construction could not begin before school was out.
Right, no, that's what I just, that's what I'm thinking through. I understand that, but it was just kind of a gap in the.
Couldn't have all those trucks coming up the hill at the same time as the buses.
Yeah, I mean, it might be interesting to think about those trucks and how many trucks it is per day because that's kind of, I don't know, it's 10 or 15, I guess, sounded like. But anyway. Can I just try to put into my own words what I understand the difference between option one and option two? Is, option two is the one, is one foot of fill in places, or is it in places or everywhere?
Everywhere.
Everywhere. And two is, one, sorry, one is two feet of fill everywhere. And the con, the reason to go with the two feet, the benefit of the two feet versus the one foot, is that the two feet gives you a bigger bear, well, two things. A bigger barrier against debris that might come to the surface. That's one thing, as I understand it. And also with the one-foot approach, as Bob said, there's the risk that you have, you have to get in and excavate particular areas, and there's the risk that you might dig up something else that might require further work. And I don't know how, how to, if there's a way to kind of put more substance in how big of a risk that is, or is it just an unknown? But it's a risk that's out there, but we have no idea how serious that risk is. Is that, are those things fair in what I described?
I think it's quite accurate.
In terms of the pros and cons of these two options? And, well, the pro of option two is it's cheaper. Right, okay.
I think that's a good.
And fewer trucks.
And fewer trucks.
There's also.
And more trees.
There's a con, if you discover more, it's going to affect your schedule. They just do it all construction, right? So if you suddenly have to excavate more, it's going to affect your, your schedule's going to be longer. You may not have the field done in time.
Right, right. So you have more seasons where you have to do with, make do with second best or third best. Okay. My only other comment, I mean, I'm very sympathetic to, I don't know, I'm not sure. I'm sympathetic to all, they all sound good to me, you know. I sort of recognize the pros and cons, and I'm, you know, I feel, you know, feel that we've got a lot of good information tonight, and we can make a pretty good decision with this stuff. You know, I think that, you know, I'm looking back to the old referenda that we had where the first one almost passed, or just barely failed, depending on how you look at it. And the second one lost badly. I know that, you know, among the issues that those referenda had was, I think, a sense that there was a particular group that benefits. You know, there are people who benefit, whose families do athletics and sports who benefit from these. And in the first referendum, we're very pushy and very upfront about campaigning for this. And I think that turned more than a few people off. And I just think it's helpful to have, it's been clear for a long time that we need to improve. improve the state of our fields. And the question is, how do we do that in a way that gets broad support from the community? And I think the way to do that is first of all to show that we're being very prudent about the resources we're using, so that people who are concerned about their taxes know that the money is being spent as well as can possibly be spent and only on the things that we really think there's a benefit, a clear benefit in terms of our programs. And secondly, that we show that we have a good process in place for overall planning for the district so that we get all of the elements that we want to improve in this district, from curriculum, which is not a facilities issue, but it's a planning issue, through the buildings and the fields, all sort of on the road to being dealt with, so that the public doesn't feel that we're only focusing on this one area that benefits only a subset of the community. So I think that's really important, that this be part of the long-term planning process, that we're hopefully going to see a lot of, a lot of progress on this year. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the board? Our next meeting is this Tuesday, the 14th, at 7:30. And can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.